I'll call the meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission for this very wet June the 7th order. Would you please stand for the pledge? Row call, please, Lori.
Chairman Richardson.
Here.
Vice Chairman Aton.
Here.
Harry Grant.
Here.
Member Perez.
Here.
Member Fason. Member Garad. Alternate member Childs.
Here.
Alternate member Rogers.
Here.
School board member Gilbert.
Here.
Okay, we do have a quorum. Next item is approval of minutes of May 17th. Have you had a chance to review the minutes?
I haven't, I'd like to make a recommendation to approve the minutes. Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Any more discussion? Row call, please.
Member Childs.
Yes.
Secretary Grant.
Yes.
Member Perez.
Yes.
Member Rogers.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Aton.
Yes.
Member Garad.
Yes.
Chairman Richardson.
Yes. Before we get into the agenda items, the mayor made award, the mayor's award for community spirit. He made it for Jane Spindel. And Jane worked right up until the time she passed away. And she even was working the meals for the homeless at First Methodist Church with me and Dan about two weeks before she passed. And he gave, he named her as a winner. And I would like for Dan to give this to Eddie to pass around, not pass around, but show around. And with this award came a certificate and fifty dollars. And we voted at Rotary to accept the mayor's recommendation that be given to the Rotary Scholarship Fund for high schoolers. And I think, you know, as much as we regretted her passing, this is one way that she'll live forever. I think it'll be displayed at City Hall because that's an appropriate place to display. Okay, we're going to the next item. Old business, staff.
Yes, sir, thank you. This item begins on page 10. I will give you the full background since we've discussed it at the past several meetings. Just generally, in summary, the discussion of accessory dwelling units came about because there was a perception that there may be some regulatory barriers to accessory dwelling units in the code. And so we've provided some, some other cities, Palm Bay specifically, accessory dwelling unit code as well as our cities. And I think from what I've heard so far, the consensus of what our existing code says and what challenges there may be, it sounded to me like there was consensus that maybe reducing the minimum floor area that's required for ADUs, removing the owner occupancy requirement, and increasing or removing the threshold of the percentage that it be part of the, the primary structure. So there's a requirement that it be twenty-five percent, no more than twenty-five percent of the size of the primary structure. Either we're do, increasing that requirement or removing it altogether. Were three of the, kind of the consensus that I heard. And so if you wanted to look at the existing code again, that's on page 18 of tonight's agenda. But I just also wanted to remind the commission that on February 14th, the discussion about accessory dwelling units was forwarded to City Council. City Council considered it and requested that PNZ provide additional investigation into the impacts of surrounding neighborhoods and provide a report back within six months. And so six months would be in August, and so we've got maybe one or two more meetings to discuss this.
All right. Since the instigator of this discussion can't be here tonight, we attended a summit, May 18th in Cocoa. And Mr. Garad was there, Mr. Perez was there, I was there. And Member Fason was there, as well as Eddie. The vice mayor was there, the city manager was there, and the, some of the staff from Affordable Neighborhood Services Unit, I think that's what they're called. But we learned a lot, but unfortunately, registration was not as well organized. And the meeting was delayed, so there wasn't any time for discussions or in exchange of ideas. But it was very good. And we found out what different cities in the county is, is doing for the affordable housing. It didn't go into accessory dwelling units until after lunchtime. And again, that was the same situation. There weren't time for questions and things like that. But we found out, you should, Eddie sent it to you. Looks like Minneapolis, but that's not the way they pronounce it. This building accessory dwelling units and tiny homes in Cocoa, just off 520. And they can be used as accessory dwelling units, as well as tiny homes. And the price of them vary from 120 to 140. And they look very well made as you saw them. Okay. Anyone want to start off the discussion? Secretary Grant.
Well, I have, actually, Mr. Rogers was first. Okay, all right. I had a couple of reservations. One, historical properties, but I've changed my mind because they are residential areas. My problem is in Indian River City neighborhood commercial. It doesn't make any sense to me. Why commercial? If you're going, and I was also going, maybe suggesting if you're going to have ADUs and commercial, those commercial properties, that they be, instead of, instead of by right, maybe it should be by conditional CUP in commercial areas, if they insist on having them. That's just my opinion on it. But I don't understand the need for ADUs in commercial areas. And, and especially in Indian River City. Just asking.
So just to make sure that all the members are on the same page, what Member Grant is talking about is on page 19 of 57. It specifically breaks out the Indian River City Neighborhood Commercial, IRC NC zoning district, and provides the limitations for ADUs within that zoning district.
Where is that in?
It's on page 19.
No, no, but I mean, where is Indian River City?
North of Highway 50 and west of US-1.
Oh, okay.
And so there's a portion of it that is zoned IRC NC and IRC NR. One is commercial and one is residential. And currently, the code allows for accessory dwelling units in the IRC NC zoning district. With, assuming you can meet all the limitations. So it's not permitted by right, you do have to meet some limitations, and then it is permitted. I think what you're suggesting is to require a conditional use permit, which would make it more restrictive than what the code currently allows. And I believe the discussion was trying to encourage accessory dwelling units by reducing barriers.
Not in commercial areas. I have all for it in residential, even historical residential. But commercial doesn't make any sense to me. Now, you can convince me, I'm gay.
Well, I didn't draft the ordinance that, that permitted the accessory dwelling units in the IRC NC, so I can't give you the background on why that was specifically included. I can just tell you that that's what's currently permitted in the code. But if you believe that that's not something that's appropriate, then you can make that recommendation to council.
Well, I would rather put it up for discussion among the, the board, instead of making a motion for it, you know.
Member Rogers.
I was just going to say that I, that confused me too a little bit, except I didn't know where Indian River City was, being a little bit newer to the area. But I think probably it, it might have been thinking along the lines of what you see in the, you know, larger, older northern cities where you tended to have kind of retail or some sort of shop or restaurant on the ground floor, and then people who owned it, living above it, in an apartment. And I think there can be some benefit to that, but I think it's in a, in a denser environment than you would find over there. I think it adds a bit of vibrancy to, to an area and a neighborhood. But yeah, I, I would tend to agree. I, I don't really see it unless it was right downtown in that older, you know, a couple of the older buildings downtown. I don't really see a place that seems appropriate in Titusville.
Well, Mary, may I follow up a little bit? They can't be rented from, I believe, the ordinance that you're drafting, or we're drafting, saying they cannot be rented in a commercial area. So I have them.
So what you're describing is on page 19 again, it's subsection 3C. And it says, shall be one residential unit intended to be owned by the owner or proprietor of the business. It shall not be rented.
Right.
So again, this is not an ordinance that is being drafted. This is current code language. So this is something that someone could come in today and request an accessory dwelling unit in this zoning district, and the city would have to oblige, would have to provide a permit if it met all the standards. So I think what you're suggesting can be incorporated in any changes that you'd like to see in this code, but currently it's permitted.
Just as a matter of what Mr. Rogers asked about. In 1963, Titusville was, the city of Indian River City and Whispering Hills were annexed in the Titusville by the legislature. The voters of Titusville had no choice.
Really?
Yeah. In fact, some people that live in Indian River City still say they live in Indian River City. And that is approximately from the old Sears Town to south and west to about Hickory Hills, I'd say. Because, well, I live on Nice McCray, which is part of Indian River City. Whispering Hills was off of Park Avenue, all that area there. You know, in fact, we're seeing now some residences that don't meet the current codes, but they did meet what codes were in effect in Indian River City or Whispering Hills. Titusville was the, where we are right now, the core. But that was how Whispering Hills and Indian River City became part of Titusville. Member Aton? No, Member Garad, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Chairman. I have a question and a couple of comments along the, about Indian River City commercial. I'm a little familiar with the area, and when you described it being north of Highway 50 and west of US-1, you see storefronts, street front commercial, both on Hopkins and US-1 for that matter, and for Highway 50. Is the IRC area limited, is, or is it inclusive of the entire, what's known as Indian River City, as was being discussed? Or is it more a street frontage area that's specific? And then the rest of that area is the Indian River City residential? I don't have a zoning map, so if you can help me with that question.
Sure, we have in the, in the land development regulations, we have the outline of the boundaries. Just pulling up the zoning map real quick. And it is generally south of Olmstead Drive, north of Highway 50, and east of the railroad to the waterfront.
So the blocks of properties between US-1, Hopkins, 50, and Olmstead is this Indian River City commercial?
Correct.
And, you know.
There's actually two sub-districts, I'm sorry. There's the correct, what Eddie's saying, there's one zoning district, IRCN, and there's two sub-districts. The one we're talking about is commercial, that's along the commercial corridor of Hopkins and US-1. The interior has residential zone, sub-district.
That would be my assumption, thank you very much. The, the comment that, that I would have is kind of an opening comment for accessory dwelling units. And I thought about this after a follow-up to the meeting we had, the, the seminar we went to. It seems there's an overarching issue, which is kind of the cart and horse. Is it accessory dwelling units that people want to foster permissiveness to, to allow them to be more user adaptive? Allow them as a use that's intended to be promoting families and, and, and family members and associates as traditionally accessory dwellings were done? Or is it, as we discussed in the previous meetings, and it tends to fall over towards the affordable housing? And where between the cart and the horse get together, I think, what I've come to, at least my consideration, is that you really need to focus on what you're trying to promote. If affordable housing is the overarching subject and not just an accessory dwelling. Prohibitive qualifications, like was discussed and is currently in the code, that the owner or some family member has to live there begs the question, how busy is code enforcement now? And how busy will they be when they chase down some renter's lease, or lack of lease, or some landlord? Who explains, these are all family and friends? I, I had a, a degree of experience in that, and that's exactly what goes on. It becomes a cat and mouse game. It's difficult to enforce at the best. It may be impossible to enforce because you have to choose, are you going to search out lease and renters and watch these folks overnight and ask them if they're somebody's family member? Or are you just going to say it's an occupied dwelling? It's habitable based on codes, life safety codes, the predominant code. And that's the principal guiding effort of the government, in my humble opinion, as opposed to creating these prohibitive barriers. I think affordable housing is inclusive of accessory dwelling units, as opposed to separate, whereby you have prohibitive clauses that impede the ability of somebody to promote or provide somebody, whoever that person is, an affordable place to live. Whether it's a sister or an unrelated person, it's the fact that the owner has the opportunity to capitalize their, probably doing this for good profit margin motives. I mean, I would if I had one. Somebody spoke about having Airbnb in the historic district from your, your prior chairman. That's, in my humble opinion, that's exactly what you should promote. If the owner wants the sister, estranged spouse, or like-kind to stay there, that's their prerogative. But to divorce yourself of the ability of somebody to rent it, making somewhat of recovery on cost, making somewhat maybe a benefit to themselves, because the impetus to build it is, hey, I might be able to pay off some of my mortgage early from the proceeds from rent. I really am compelled to suggest prohibiting renting, renting an accessory dwelling, would kind of like prohibit renting an affordable home. Saying that, oh, you can only build an affordable home if you live in it. We want to promote owner residency. We, and all the stuff we've been looking at that's available, some of the stuff you, you've been forwarded, it really seems that it's taking the approach to combine the efforts of promoting affordable housing by including accessory dwellings. And to do further is to look at the prohibitive structure setbacks that are prohibitive because they don't give enough room to build something in the backyard, or that it has to be so many square feet, or 25%. All of that's right. In fact, if you have a relationship, as I read the code currently, you can't exceed the maximum buildable area net in the lot that you put this on. You have to meet a setback, and you have to meet a heights restriction. Those alone kind of dictate how big something's going to be. If you add the clause, well, we don't want it to be less than 200, or more than 800, or 25%, I caution that relationship to percentage is that someone's going to be in a disagreement about, what's my home? Oh, my porch is part of my home. Well, no, that's not conditioned floor area. Well, my porch is concrete block, and it's got a structural roof in it. Other than vinyl windows, it's a home, it's habitable. But the building codes that were enacted are going to say, well, no, it's not part of the structure, so you have to discount that when you add the 25%. And poor staff is sitting there trying to argue with someone, percentage. My humble opinion, most of these communities look at minimum because it's habitable living area for someone that doesn't want a tenement house laws, where all the zoning laws came from. And that's what tenement house laws did. Let people build without any restriction, and they took advantage of human beings. We built zoning laws such as minimum living areas from the lessons learned when you just laissez-faire everything. So good standards are minimum living area. Like a motel room, I think, is probably around 200 square feet. And if you've ever been on the road, you can live in a motel room, quite frankly. You can live quite nice in a motel room, you don't have to make your own bed. Maximum size, I think, looking at a person's typical home, 1,000 square feet, it's a pretty large home. I'm retired, and it's more than I can maintain. 800 is probably relevant to that relationship between setbacks, maximum lot areas. It's going to guide you in that direction. That's what I came away looking at it. But I would suggest to all board members, or commission members, excuse me, that you try to think of the inclusion of accessory dwellings under the umbrella of affordable housing, for good reason. Somebody wants to build these things, that's the supply, and the demand is out there. People don't have places to live, and they can't afford to live them. That's my two bits, thank you very much.
Member Aton?
One of mine is, it's related to Member Grant's question. Because I'm somewhat familiar with the historical nature of the IRC zoning, or IRC N zoning. Is it generally that the dash C, the, the structures on those are commercial properties? Are there instances where there's actually houses because they're grandfathered in, or something that are actually on something that's zoned IRC N dash C?
I don't have that information to tell you definitively, but I would presume that there's a, a couple homes existing, non-conforming homes within the IRC NC.
So I, yeah, that, that would be, you know, on, on some of this stuff that's really old like this, that, you know, there may be an, an owner that's got a house. They're, they're grandfathered into the dash C zoning, but they want to build an ADU. So that, that in my mind would be, potentially be an exception. But overall, I, I generally agree. I, I mean, I'm kind of like, Secretary Grant, I could probably be swayed on the, if the owner of a business and the owner of the building wants to build it, an ADU behind it, and they live in it. But to, to build one from affordable housing in a commercial, I think at that point you start to get, is that really multifamily, or, you know, mixed use, or something like that? My.
Oh, go ahead.
My other question was, and I, I just know about this because of personal experience. I know that there's generally limits on overall accessory structures related to this, to, to building. And so if somebody had a detached garage already, that is considered an accessory structure because it's not attached to the house, by building code, like Member Garad said. And they, and, and, and I think it's 50% is, is the accessory structure size. And if they want to build an ADU, and that's also considered an accessory structure, and it puts them over the 50%, should we consider ADUs are exempted from that, that accessory structure calculation or something? Just as a point of, you know, trying to get this right, hopefully the first time.
Member Charles.
I was going to say, with that commercial in the Indian River City, a commercial zone, could we just say if it's a, if it's an, what do you call it, an exception residential? Put into the code saying, not just one ADU per commercial lot, but one for non-conforming residential and a commercial lot? Could we say something like that in there? Or like, is that, I don't know if, because if we could just say, because that, right now, is any commercial, I can do it. But if we have any concerns about it, we don't want to limit the people who actually have houses, not conforming houses in the commercial area. But if we could still have it, say, one ADU per not conforming lot in the commercial, you know, in that, in that zone? Maybe something like that. But also, we just want to share, I did a lot of research, you know, because I know, like, one of the concerns for City Council was, you know, what's the neighborhood going to look like if, like, everyone starts building ADUs and stuff? So I did a lot of research and tried to find, you know, like, news articles and stuff about. So a lot of the stuff I found, well, one of the big news things was like, when, when a city passed an ordinance, probably Allen, California, there's a lot of residents. So many people started building ADUs that it was just crazy loud on the street. You know, there was like two or three going up. So that was, that's, I guess that's going to happen, so I don't think there's anything we can do about that. The other thing is parking, you know, parking starts increasing on the, on the, on the street. I don't know that, I know right now, I think we, it's, I think it's required that they have a, a certain amount of parking spots. But I don't, I mean, I guess it depends. I'm just, I, I think that we should at least let City Council know, say, hey, this is what we found, because I know they asked for that. I don't know if we need to put it in the code, but say, look, yes, this is one of the things that people complained about when there's, you know, ADUs going up on the street, as there's parking issues. And the other thing was, houses being built too close to the side. The side of it was, they were allowing them to go so close where, I saw this picture where this guy's like trying to walk through, and his shoulders can't even fit through, it was that close. Because they built the wall, and then they allowed, by code, they, they measured the wall to where, where the block was. And then they put a bunch of stucco on the side of the chimney, because they needed fire retardant around it, per code too. And they didn't take all that foot of stucco on the side into account. So I don't know if we'll have that problem, but I think if we, you know, if, if the setbacks, I don't know, that's, that's not currently set in this code, right? Where the setbacks, the setbacks are still set per, per the lot, is that right? Or in, in the co, current code, are setbacks taken into account into ADU part of the code? Or is it still just building?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we have an accessory structure setback section that's distinct from the primary structure setbacks.
However, if it's attached to the building, attached to the house as an accessory structure, then it has to meet the principal structure setbacks.
If we have it as a separate thing, there'd be se, separate setbacks for, for the accessory dwelling unit if it's detached?
If it's detached, it'd be considered detached like any other accessory structure.
Is that in this code on here, on our, on our packet anywhere?
No, so the section in, on pages 18 and 19 describe the limitations for the use within those zoning districts. For the development standards, we have that in a separate section. I can give you the code reference. It's accessory use standard. Accessory use standards. Development standards and that's in section twenty eight dash three ninety one. Uh, where we've got two tables, one is for rear yard setbacks and one is for side yard setbacks. It's in the code. Uh, we don't have this section in your agenda packet.
So I think in our discussions about that, as long as. We're not getting too close to the side houses. I don't know that the backyard stuff has been a problem with other places, but seems to be the side yards are. And I agree, I think we should be looking at this as affordable housing supplement. It's not a, you know, fix all. But I definitely think, yeah, letting people rent it and stuff is a is a good idea to meet those goals, but. Um, that's just some of the things that I found.
I agree that it's one component of affordable housing. And because I'm still going around the city once a week. I doubt some of those lots you can put an accessory dwelling in it. There's, it looked like there's only ten feet between the walls. And the backyard is almost nonexistent.
So are you saying put a minimum lot size?
I think they would have to be. Every every lot could not. Accessory dwelling unit. Let's see.
It's top of page sixteen, they list the numbers.
Yeah, in fact, some of the information Palm Bay had, as I remember, they were two hundred fifty square feet. And I thought at the time that was probably acceptable. I don't feel that way now. Okay, member Gerard, you've still got your.
Yeah, so I wanted to, I wanted to make a about, I think. The concept of making in the Indian River commercial, these dwellings as a conditional use makes good sense. Because where my question was headed was how many of the properties on my minds I I see, which are converted homes that are now commercially utilized? Or the one that comes to mind, I think fits fits the grid of the area you described is what I think at some point, not when I was here, but. Maybe afterwards, but now it's it's no longer uses a restaurant that used to be a home, it's front US one. And one day it'll be a restaurant again, and that's in the Indian River City commercial. It's a very oversized lot. It must have used to have been a very large home. But it would be a good example of how in that zoning district you could put a scenario together. And envision someone who would own a restaurant who might want the main cook to live there while he's running the restaurant and that lot would support. A lot of that, but that's just one rare example, so I think the conditional use direction for that zoning district. Is a good direction to take because it's gonna have to allow everyone to look at each case uniquely. To see if it's gonna work, too close to the buildings, one example, those can all be ferreted out in a condition ease. On the other hand, you wouldn't want to apply that to any others uses because it just makes it difficult and again prohibitive.
I've got member Rogers and member Gilbert and then member Grant.
I I find that what I tend to focus on and a lot of this is is the size of the things. And I I was long fascinated by tiny houses, the ones on on trailers, you know, so of course they can only be eight and a half feet wide. They tend to be up to about, they say, more than twenty four feet long, even with a big truck, it's hard to tow them, so. You know, basically somewhere between, you know, somewhere between, you know, fifteen and and twenty four, twenty five feet. Basically, kind of seems to be the sweet spot for those. And that results in an average square footage of two hundred and twenty five square feet, so you're over two hundred on that. However, the really easy, cheap way to get housing quickly into a location and FEMA knows this. Because it's what they do with their, you know, disaster homes for hurricanes and stuff is trailers. Um, and shipping containers and that kind of thing. And I have to say, I'm kind of interested in the shipping containers and there's a guy down in West Palm. He's got a website called Containing Luxury. He was just voted the best business idea by Mr. Wonderful on Shark Tank.
Been watching that for a long time.
And, yeah, he, his name's Blake something, I can't remember his last name, but anyway. Um, at the moment, he's selling twenty foot shipping containers, which again is a living unit, small, but it's got a bathroom. And it's got, it's got a kitchenette and it's got like probably a Murphy bed or something like that, or like a little kind of raised platform bed. I mean, it's probably for just one person, but it might be a couple if they're good friends. But anyway, thirty five to forty five thousand dollars, the forty foot is sixty five to eighty five thousand dollars. It arrives, you plunk it down on whatever the foundation is that's been selected for it and then you're good to go. You hook up the connections and and you're good to go. The twenty footer thirty five to forty five thousand, the forty footer sixty five to eighty five thousand. But the twenty footer is only a hundred and seventy square feet, so if you set it at at two hundred, you you couldn't get that in. The forty footer is three hundred and forty square feet. So, you know, that would be, to me, you know, I was kind of thinking two hundred to eight hundred would be your sort of range. But even even two hundred, I think occasionally you might kind of keep some, I don't know, some useful. Tiny, quick, cheap housing out of the market that maybe you would want or the people would want. And one other thing I'll just mention, just because as you guys know, I've got a lot of architects in my family. I don't necessarily agree with saying that they should look like the house or they should look like, you know, the neighborhood or something, because frankly. I lived in Portland, Oregon for a while and you see quite a few of these things there. A lot of times they look better than the house. You know, if you let, this is the kind of thing that an architecture student, you know, they would probably do for free just so they can put it in their portfolio. And, you know, it's, you can get some really, really interesting stuff that, you know, that, you know, makes you think, wow, you know, look what's possible. And it kind of inspires people and it actually dresses up the neighborhood, you know, some neighborhoods, frankly, I think, you know. They could they could do with a little bit of of actual design. Anyway, my thoughts.
Mrs. Gilbert.
I just wanted to mention that someone had mentioned something about the parking and that being an issue on the street. And that, again, the the code does say on page eighteen G that you have to have at least one off-street parking space. Provided for the ADU, so I mean, that sort of is gonna limit. Who can have it, you know, in terms of what you have, you know, what room you have available to to add that space.
Member Grant.
Well, I'll follow up on a couple of things. One, I think Mr. Rogers hadn't won, Ms. Gilbert here, she was talking about parking. And one of the. Presentations, for the lack of a better term, that you sent us, I think I think Brad sent it. Um, I was looking at it and they were talking about areas. Like Orlando that do not require additional parking for ADUs that are five hundred feet, I'm sorry, five hundred square feet or less. Or Pinellas County that does not have a minimum or maximum for ADUs. Or that if on-street parking is available, then they would exempt smaller ADUs and et cetera, et cetera, like that. And even older adults, I don't know how you do that, but would be exempt from having for any type of parking requirements. And also there are some places who waive parking for ADUs altogether. I, we would have to make a determination which direction we want to go on that, right? Keep that in mind. And number two, I think, Mr. Rogers, you said. You were mentioning tiny homes to be used as ADUs. Well, yeah, tiny homes could be used, but tiny homes on wheels cannot because they don't have a foundation. They have to have a foundation.
Yeah, but they do make tiny homes without wheels.
Right, I know that. They're fine, but the ones on wheels, you mentioned wheels.
That's correct, sorry, you're right, I I actually was not considering that. However, there are people, I think, who use the wheels to get it to where it's going and then they take the wheels off and kind of, you know, weld it or bolt it, yeah. But you're right, I mean, I I miss that.
It's kind of ironic that Tiny Homes Nation appeared every night on TV. While we're discussing this. Member Gerard, you're like.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Something that that I can. Gain from my experience to mention when you talk about tiny homes in the presentation that they made. At the meeting, we, the seminar, as well as the presentation or discussion they had with the representatives. Is that, and when you mentioned Hurricane Katrina and you mentioned FEMA homes. At the time, I learned this and perhaps subject to change, but if it hasn't, it worked in this manner. FEMA's units they provided were recreational vehicles. They were not manufactured housing. If you've been in a recreational vehicle, be it a motor coach or be it a fifth wheel or a travel trailer, you'll notice there's a lot of disclaimers. Stuck on the walls and places that are obvious because the manufacturing. Procedure for recreational vehicles utilizes a lot of material whose composition is not healthy. And trying to make a recreational vehicle, whatever size it is. A permanent dwelling poses a risk to a person's health. And on the other hand, manufactured housing at the time, again, could be subject to change, staff could research this maybe and see if it's still the same. Is that manufactured housing inclusive of. Double wides and single wides and like kind. Which are designed in composition the same as modular housing. Modular housing's constructed differently, but in some cases they're constructed in the same facility. Kind of like over here's the truck line and over here's the the Pinto line. So I would be hesitant to want to place, if I'm correct in my memory. It serves me right and that the rule hasn't changed, that the manufacturing. Of recreational vehicles, which would include these tiny homes on wheels as being described. Really should not be the end-all for a dwelling for permanent residency. I I that would be my comment. However, because over on the other side of the factory, they're making modular homes, speaking of without wheels or they take them off. Taking them off isn't the same as making them without it. The delivery is more akin to a flatbed. It's dropped off, hoisted in and set up. And it's facilitated in the plumbing and electrification of those in the same manner you do a home. So when you see the pictures we saw in some of the literature we've looked at. You you see these things, they're very ornate, they got porches on the front. They may be only eight feet wide because that's the standard by which you tow something down a highway. The fact of the matter is it can be dwelling, it is permanent. And it's not constructed of the material composition like the ones on wheels. That would be supporting the permanent occupancy of those kinds, so one thing to think on is. How could you define the type of habitable dwelling you would promote through a change in your code? Promoting modular use as opposed to travel trailers, using that generic type of discussion. Tiny home may be, but it is a recreational vehicle. They used to call them park models when it first came out. And if you've been in RV parks, you probably have seen them. You can go check in like a motel room and it's all ready for you. Some look like cabins and if you saw the recent redevelopment of Disney's Wilderness Campground, that's what they have everywhere. But at the end of the day, those aren't, I believe, modular buildings. They are, at the end of the day, recreational vehicles and they're not really designed to be suitable for permanent occupancy. So separating those two, but I would also add. Try to consider allowing that modular industry that builds those kinds of permanent dwellings, which are modular in construction as opposed to brick and mortar. Or wood frame site built, include those because you can make them look good. And I agree with your comment, you might have the accessory dwelling look better than the home. And you can't look in permissiveness and tell a homeowner, well, we want you to make your home look like your accessory dwelling. That just takes more money. And I don't, and I agree with your comment, I don't know what you're getting for that if you, it's like you want to paint it the same color as your house. That would be almost the same kind of notion, but that's my comment. Thank you.
Okay, I do want to point out that is this is not a public hearing. But if a member of the public would like to discuss this item. Uh, you're more than welcome to. We just ask that you, after you make your discussion, fill out a card and give it to Lori over there. Do you want to have any discussion? Okay. Okay, Commission, what do you think we should do? Continue to discuss this? Or have we come to some kind of? Kind of an agreement? Uh, Secretary Grant.
Have we decided on a lot, on a, excuse me, a ADU size? I know, Mr. Fason, the reason why we are here is because, well, I'll say the reason why we're here, but. Reason why this was kicked down the road a little bit because Mr. Fason wanted six hundred square feet.
No, I think he wanted two fifty.
Two fifty?
Yeah. The minimum.
I was talking about the maximum.
Oh, okay.
Have we decided on a maximum? You you didn't mention a maximum, did you, in your in your audits?
No, sir. Well, the maximum with relation to how the size compared to the principal structure. So the code currently says that an accessory dwelling unit cannot exceed twenty five percent the size of the primary dwelling unit. So in that case, for example, if you had a twelve hundred square foot home. The ADU could only be three hundred square feet, which our code does not currently allow. The minimum size is six hundred square feet. So homes would have to be larger than twelve hundred square feet to even be eligible to have an ADU currently.
So smaller homes would would not be eligible for ADUs?
Correct, with the existing, this is on page eighteen, subsection C one E.
Is that fair?
I can give you a little history about what, when we created this, that was a big debate in our staff about what to really, what was appropriate, what was. So we are open to any suggestions of what you'd like to recommend to city councils or staff.
This is all about affordable housing. That's the catch-all, that's that's the buzzword here, affordable housing.
So fifteen of fifty seven, Palm Bay is, if if we're gonna start somewhere. Air-conditioned floor area of the ADU shall not exceed fifty percent of the air-conditioned floor area of the principal structure. Or eight hundred square feet, whichever is less. So the eight hundred catches the six thousand square foot house. You can't build a three thousand square foot ADU. But the fifty percent catches the. You can't put an eight hundred square feet ADU right next to an eight hundred square foot house.
Makes sense.
Which makes sense.
Yes.
So I think that, I I'm actually pretty happy with that. Maximum, and then I think we just need to decide on the minimum.
Yeah.
I would agree with that.
Member Rogers, you're next.
I would agree with that. I was just going to say the, yeah, I I that bothered me too, the twenty five percent, maybe fifty percent. But the ironic thing is, a smaller house is going to have enough room to put an ADU on it and a really large house on the lot might not. So, you know, really you're kind of handicapping the people who actually would be able to to fit something a little nicer. I I just think fifty percent seems like a more reasonable number and and eight hundred is maximum seems okay to me. But I would go all the way down to a hundred and fifty, simply because it would get a twenty foot shipping container in there. And I know, I think I maybe have a couple of people here who don't like shipping containers as an idea, but they're better than you think, I think, and they're cheap.
Do you want to indicate the marks that you placed on the carpet?
Uh, yes, this is, there are, if you see behind your chairs, there's some blue tape. That's eight feet out from the wall. The lines, they're basically under your, the rollers of your chair. And then there's a a line that's kind of crossways this way, twenty feet from that wall. So a twenty foot shipping container would essentially be. Here, it would be, it would be, I'm on the lines right now. So it's small, but you end up with a bathroom here, a kitchenette here. And probably a sort of sliding glass door here. And of course, I'm on the line here, so it's 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 not, it's it's not terrible. I mean, it's tiny, of course, and then probably a Murphy bed or or a sort of a bed on a platform here. And then, of course, you know, for forty feet, you essentially double it, which takes you pretty much to that other wall.
We're gonna tell your family members that we're architects that.
It's pretty much, the forty foot container is pretty much along the line of these chairs, back to that wall and from this wall to that wall. And actually, you can raise kids in that space, people used to. I'm gonna be tight, but anyway, I just think shipping containers, don't dismiss them out of hand because they look industrial. You can kind of hide that.
I would quite frankly agree. We, we've had this discussion several years ago about shipping containers, and it was, nay, they're not gonna have it. But I think it, it, the way they make them looks rather unique, but we'll get into that. Member Gerard, do you have anything else to say?
I was just gonna kind of chime in on the shipping container discussion. That in itself may be something you want to discover more on and talk further on. Back to my story about travel trailers and habitable, long-term duration. The shipping containers can be modified based on code compliance. When they're done, they're probably more resilient to storms than conventional construction. The ability to do that, in my opinion, should be focused on those codes which enable a structure to be fit for human occupancy, period. Whether you like a shipping container doesn't mean that what ends up as the accessory dwelling, or for affordable housing, or even for housing, is a shipping container. Once it's modified to meet those life safety codes and health codes related to human occupancy, it's a dwelling unit made of steel composition. So if someone came in the building department and said, like, I'm gonna build a really good home, it's gonna be all out of steel, and it looks like a shipping container, but I'm gonna build it on-site and weld it on-site, and when you're done, it's the same thing. So maybe kick the can down the road, as it says, look at that later, when you can maybe have a whole presentation on places that have codified that very subject. And when you see them, the one that I still was amazed at is they, they built a two-story Starbucks in Seattle, that if you were to go buy your coffee in Starbucks in Seattle, got off the plane and went downtown, you would never know what it began as a stack of shipping containers. So maybe postpone that. I think you might have some people here that think this is a good idea, and some that don't, like you mentioned, but think about that later when it relates to the codes. Back to accessory dwellings, I would just stay in the comments I've made before.
Thank you.
Before I recognize Member Aton, a couple of things I would say. NASA in the 70s established an office con, con, concept in the, of abandoned railroad cars. Which... And...
I think it was called F True.
And I understand, I may be wrong, but years ago, I was told that the city's objection to those containers were that the wiring would come in conduits, would not be covered. There would be exposed conduit. But that is like a garage, has exposed conduit sometimes, and some...
Can't avoid it sometimes.
Yeah, you can't. Member Aton?
So my reading of, or glancing at the Palm Day, Palm Bay ADU code, it's silent on construction materials, construction style, everything. All it says is it's not a mobile home, or it's not an RV. So I think elsewhere in the code, or I'm not sure where it addresses, but I'm, I'm, you know, I think, you know, whether we're kicking the can down the road, or whether we're just leaving it up to other parts of the code. I, I didn't see anything in there. It says it can be a detached freestanding structure, or it can be an attached part of the dwelling. So I mean, I, I think, you know, in general, there, there's probably, you know, a, a good bit here in the Palm Bay one, which is the one that staff picked as, as kind of the model maybe we work from. So in, in an effort to move this along, maybe we take this and go one by one through the points and say, we like that, or we don't like that, and try to narrow this down to something that we're good to send off to council.
Yeah, we've got time, so I was thinking the next meeting, we'll look at Palm Bay, and...
Mr. Chairman, at your next meeting, you have three potential quasi-digital items coming before you. So you will have a...
It's, it's in our packet. Here's the Palm Bay one, so...
Of course, I've been told that before.
That's true. It changes all the time. But your next few meetings, so far, are gonna be pretty busy.
Okay. Member Grant, you may have the last word.
Really?
Mm-hmm. We're going, maybe other items on the agenda. Does everybody agree? We've talked about it for almost an hour.
Okay, well, I can, I can just wait.
Member Grant. Vice, Secretary Grant, I mean.
Density calculations is one of the things that we hear a lot with the single-family dwellings being built, right? Have we considered, or should we consider exempting all ADUs from, from part of, being part of density? If you know, you know what I'm trying to say here, I'm, I'm not an architect and stuff like that, but it, just exempt them from being part of the overall, overall density of the property. Or, you know, you know what I'm trying to say? Okay?
I do. I, I don't know that we've had a case where an accessory dwelling unit was, a, a permit application was submitted for an accessory dwelling unit that was denied because it had, the neighborhood had been over density, but it's possible that that could happen, yeah?
How many have we had?
Not very many.
Well, we were supposed to be putting together a Bible, so to speak, right? The Bible should speak, I think, you know, tell it like it is. And no... I, I just think it maybe, they shouldn't, ADU should not be part of the density calc- calculations. Also, impact fees, that's something else, another way for the city to get money.
Well, in some of the cases, the, some of the cities, it, impact fees were not charged...
I was gonna suggest that. That maybe they, yeah. Or they'd be very low. And... Part of that package that you did send, Brad, and I was looking at one of the presentations, they were talking about incentives. Now, I won't go into all of it, but one of the ones that they said here is that they should, that you should institute a one-to-two-day turnaround time for permitting. Can you do that?
We can always certainly try.
Just asking.
An utopia.
Short-term rentals, yea or nay? For ADUs.
I personally would say nay.
Me too.
What does everybody else think?
I, I don't even know. What, what is the, how, we refer to them as Airbnb, as the short-term rentals. What is the problem in the city, and other, I know they're happening, are they happening illegally, not illegally?
Chelsea, do you want to speak on that? I remember when it came up before code enforcement, you made it very plain, Airbnbs. You're giving that puzzled look.
I'm not sure exactly what you want me to comment on.
I mean, generally, without, I know, like condos and HOAs and things, there's some, some, you know, things that override it, but as, as the city goes in residential...
Turned up, yeah. In regular residential areas, are Airbnbs allowed, or they're not allowed?
So there is a, a code that the city has that prevents short-term rentals in, in residential areas. I'd have, um, let me pull it up for you.
I've got it here, Chelsea. It's, um, section 28-9, short-term rental of single-family dwellings. And so this section specifically talks about the renting of the single-family detached dwelling. I think the code is currently silent on the renting of the accessory dwelling unit. So that may be something that, that we need to add to the code.
I think, but I, I think Flor, uh, the state did pass a law, and we, we can grandfather in our Airbnb ordinance, but if we make any changes, it's null and void.
I was gonna point that out.
So, yeah.
I believe that's what I recall, too.
Yeah.
Okay. We're going all over the place here. Member Aton, you're, like, okay. Okay. So does everybody agree that we'll discuss it at the next meeting, or the meeting after that? When hopefully, Member Fason will be there. Are there any, any cards, Chelsea? I mean, Lori?
I have no cards on this item.
Okay. So...
So can we say, do the meeting? Can we say we're gonna do the meeting to take the Palm Bay?
Yes.
And start to dissect it to build out a roadmap?
Use that as a framework. Okay.
Chairman, is there anything that staff can provide some additional information, or anything that would be helpful to the discussion?
I don't really think so this time. You'll have to put together what we decide at the next meeting, but not right now. I assume anybody would joke to that.
All I was gonna say was, I do think that the, I mean, size is a critical issue, but I don't know how much research is going to help with that, but the parking is the other critical issue, and maybe some investigation into what other places do with ADUs for parking.
They're all over the place, the parking requirements are.
Yeah, it, it speaks to that. Number eight is, is on Palm Bay's is minimum one, but not more than two, which I don't understand, not more than two, who, because you also have the regular dwelling that's got parking spaces, too. I don't know who you say which ones for which, but, um... Anyway, I, I think that's there, but I, my comment for staff would be is, you know, you guys kind of looked this over. If there's any glaring omissions that it doesn't cover that you think it should, maybe give us some feedback on that.
Member Gerard?
Owing to the potential that the industry may have representatives informed when this gets to City Council for a change in the ordinance, representing that industry of manufacture, I mean, of recreational vehicles, or tiny homes with wheels as referred to. If staff could let me know if I am correct in my memory, and if not, if the codes change regarding permanent occupancy, the building codes or life, health codes, I seem to recall it's a federal regulation that steps down into the state and deals with permanent occupancy for the point of a recreational vehicle. However that recreational vehicle looks, as I mentioned, motor coach, fifth wheel, travel trailer, as opposed to manufactured housing, the construction difference is one suitable for permanent occupancy, one is only suitable for temporary occupancy. And the reason I would beg the question to look at the answer from staff's research is, if the representatives come with what they had that night, those were recreational vehicles, or else I'm wrong and they were manufactured homes. And that would be, I think, helpful to know for their benefit if they brought it in and they said, we can make it look good, it's habitable, it's, it's permanent occupancy designed, provided for, we'll take the wheels off, we'll skirt it, but when you're done, you're not gonna know what it was when it started, you're just gonna see a nice-looking building. And that, that's my own question for myself, it's been a while since I dealt with the issue.
And they require two different certifications?
Yes.
Okay. Last call. Member Rogers?
I, I do think actually, some of those, part of the reason why they make really crappy trailer, travel trailers is because they're, they're way overbuilt. I mean, sometimes they're built, I mean, it depends on, of course, the design, but like the Tumbleweed was kind of the first, Jay Schaefer was, was the guy who kind of started it. And they've still got a website, but it's called Tumbleweed Trailers or something like that. But I mean, they're, they're not, they're probably building with two-by-six framing, they may not be two-by-four, it depends, but, and you know, like plywood sheathing and insulation, and you know, it's, they're pretty heavy-duty stuff, but you know, I guess you've probably got to get it certified along the way for that, or have some kind of building inspector come, and if it's on wheels, I don't know what you do. But I, I just have this one kind of curveball question that I forgot that I'd written down. Would there be any, any precedent or any reason for the city helping residents in some way to put a down payment on one of these things, and then get it paid back over time as, as rent kind of came in? I guess I just wonder whether, whether some sort of, I don't know, CRA funds or something like that, is, does, do we have those, Community Reinvestment Act? But anyway, I guess I'm just throwing that out there, like, what if, what if somebody wants something and it's gonna cost them? What if it was one of these, you know, like 40-foot, you know, like shipping containers, and it was $65,000, and so they put down 6,500, and the city, or the city put down 6,500, and then they began to pay that back as they rented it out?
I would assume that would only apply to neighborhood services.
That was gonna be, my suggestion is that we could ask our Neighborhood Services Department if any of the grant funding that they receive could help sponsor some type of program related to ADUs.
Member Gerard, your light design again.
Last question. What's the residential impact fee for dwelling? So what's, what's the current residential impact fee for a dwelling in Titusville? It's, I assume it's transportation.
Transportation's, it's more than 3,000. That's probably three and a half, maybe 4,000 for a single-family unit.
So a point that may be, if you were to, for example, whether an accessory dwelling generates the traffic volumes, or you live in Orlando and you've got adequate mass transit available, which is why they say you don't need to park a car, because you can take the bus, Titusville not having quite the bus service, if you were to exempt those things from their transportation impact fee, that's your grant right there, not to exempt them from the school impact fee, because we've all been discussing, there could be a child living there going to school. So I would think that if you wanted an impetus to go, say to somebody, you're gonna save $3,000 over, over spending 3,000, that's almost like handing you a grant for construction. And/or consider not exempting school impact fees because of the fact they have a high potential to have a child in school in that dwelling.
Okay, we're going to the next item. Comprehensive plan and LDR update.
So Commissioners, the last few months, I've been sending you...
We have petitions and requests between those two.
Oh, we do?
Well, last, okay. Petitions and requests?
Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, professional engineer, and I'm talking to you again about SNJ Oaks, and first of all, I begin with an apology. And thank you, Mr. Richardson, for correcting me. I was certainly way off as far as saying this, that I made a presentation at PNZ prior to the acceptance of the SCUTS plan. That was entirely incorrect. Apparently, I went to two council meetings and I made the mistake of saying that. So I apologize for that. What I'm doing right now is, I'm in preparation of what's, what's been a long time going, and that is, what in the heck is going to happen with this SNJ project, right here in, in this particular poster, it says, for over six months? Well, now it's up to two years now. It's up to two years, almost two years. July, July of 2021 was when the SCUTS plat, SCUTS plat was approved, but we still have unresolved issues, which I don't know whether it's gonna go, how many years this is gonna go on, but it's, I expect it will go into court. In fact, one of the issues is already, several of the issues are already in court. So, is it, right now, is it, all the lots are R3 on the side in, in, in this area, and there's, the city is proposing a 12-foot access for R3 lots? That don't make much sense to me. And the, uh, there's no public utility easement for lots along Mockingbird Lane. The city claims no legal access in violation of Florida Statute 704, prescriptive rights, survey laws, and so forth. Still claims that. The existing two-way traffic has been, has been changed in the relocation of Mockingbird Lane. There's double standards. Let's skip the other ones. There's a big error in the angle. I made a, I made a poster about that, the angle, as a survey, I made that. This is city's, uh, city's notes, big enlargement of city's, city's field notes, and showing that the survey is way off. And I made an affidavit of the, I signed an affidavit, the survey is, is a fake survey. I made that, my goodness. So we're not getting anywhere, and I've made another, what I'm presenting to you tonight is another poster that I'm going to be presenting in court, and it has to do with you guys, all you guys. This is the southwest corner of SNJ Oaks. This is the new driveway that's only 12 feet wide, concrete... This is the new driveway that's only twelve feet wide, concrete open, where it's a relocation from twenty feet to reduce to twelve feet. It shows a, a survey corner that's way off and it shows a violation right here. I'll read this to you. It says, error, Glenn Tolson, code enforcement, can cite. I'd like two more minutes if possible.
Any motion to give an additional time?
Don't think you wanna hear about it.
No, thanks.
So I invite any of, all of you to, to join me and sometime take a look at that because it's just absolute, it's a mess up. Thank you.
Now, the comprehensive plan.
If you go to page twenty of your packet, that begins the agenda item. The last few months I've been sending you emails, just giving you a heads up upon highlights about what's been happening before city council. Their five thirty meeting, presentation meetings. So in March, April and May, there were three separate presentations given to city council by consultant Brian Kanan and Eliza Giuliano with Kanan Associates, who are now with Kimbley Horn. Some of you attended a workshop that they hosted early this year in February about the comprehensive plan and a proposal to amend our code. This is a tail off to a larger project that started several years ago called Titusville Tomorrow. And it was an effort to try and create a new comprehensive plan. Short version of this, the council decided in the end to not go forward with the draft comprehensive plan and instead gave us direction to go forward and look at what we liked out of that draft plan and bring it before them as amendments to the comprehensive plan. And then also with associated code changes as well to help implement these policies. So, for example, they looked at specific, they gave us direction specifically to look at policies that were proposed in that draft plan related to future land use, transportation, housing and environmental policies. The consultant that has been working with before city council with these presentations and that hosted that workshop in February is only focused on the first three. And that is the future land use, housing and transportation. The environmental policies will be dealt with separately. So what they presented to, at the workshop and then presented to city council at three separate meetings, I'm just gonna summarize here before you tonight and then answer any questions you have about this. In your agenda, you'll see the first draft that they are proposing as far as amendments to our comprehensive plan. So some, you'll see on page, starting on page twenty-two of your packet, where it starts with proposed policies for vision focused areas. And so they're suggesting some changes and some new policies to our comprehensive plan related to the downtown. The, an area just to the west of the downtown and our commercial quarters. So these are primarily rated, related to future land use, transportation and housing elements of our comprehensive plan. We will see a more robust version of this later on this summer. We'll present that to city council in addition to another presentation. And you will also see this, if council goes forward with it, as a transmittal hearing before you sometime this summer. So with that, I'm just gonna go through the presentation. The consultant decided to really focus on three major areas of the city, three areas that they wanted, they believed were, could help them as part of their analysis. And so they looked at the downtown, the core of the downtown, not the entire downtown mixed-use zoning district, just the core area. And then the neighborhood immediately to the west, which we have been euphemistically calling the Titusville West. There isn't a real formal name of that, but something we probably wanna speak with the community there to see if maybe they wanna formalize something. But that's what we've been calling it through this project. And then the commercial quarters. And so they, the consultant has looked at a segment of Garden Street and a segment of Cheney Highway. But what comes out of these, this analysis, these analyses of these different areas will inform the policies that they will propose as far as changes to our comprehensive plan and in our code. So the, the main crux of this whole project is really to try and create some place-based policies, current and vibrant, efficient mixed-use policies and to integrate multiple disciplines. So to help, and as part of the exercise, they looked at the downtown. And one of the first things they did was to look at the goals in that downtown. And what they thought was really important was, in the downtown, you really wanna create a sense of place and a memorable identity. So that's place making. Making downtown a more walkable and bikeable friendly area, calming it down as far as traffic, integrating more attractive green spaces, generating more activity in residential in the downtown and putting more foot traffic in the downtown with more population, more residential development. One of the policies they are proposing here is that the downtown should have a memorable identity, foster a greater variety of activities and attract a critical mass of people to live, work, visit and enjoy the small town ambience at the community center, so that we replace one of the policies that's currently inside the comp plan. Another policy they're suggesting is to encourage development and redevelopment that allows a large variety of uses. And so a mixture of uses and making sure they all work coherently. And so some of the strategies they're suggesting is allowing for adaptive reuse of existing buildings and new construction together. Coming up with holistic solutions such as a master stormwater system for the, and an open space system. They looked at Palm Avenue, they looked at all the streets, but they really focused on Palm Avenue itself. So you've got US one to the west of it, Hopkins to the west of that, Palm Avenue. They looked at that because they saw that as an opportunity. Previously, when they started working with us in two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, they looked at US one to see what they could do to kind of improve it. A lot of hurdles to that because it's an F dot owned road. And because of the commi techniques that would be necessary to put it there, weren't probably gonna get through with F dot. So they looked, in this exercise, they looked at Palm Avenue specifically. So I'm gonna show you some.
That's Palm Avenue from the courthouse to Garden Street, right?
From South Street all the way up to Garden Street, the whole segment is what they looked at. And so some of the policies, some of the exercises they did looking at that street could help inform or be replicated in other areas of the downtown, potentially. So here's an example of what Palm Avenue potentially could look like if the full potential of all their policies and strategies are implemented. And there are many ways that can be done, and this is really a long-term strategy. And so you can see Palm Avenue having a much wider tree-lined avenue if each of those property owners were redeveloped in some way over time. And, but you'd have to have the tools in place to be able to allow that and allow that public part, private partnership to be able to allow that as well. One of the cross-sections I'm gonna show you of Palm Avenue, they're showing it, is to be a little wider than what it really is. And what they're really trying to capture is asking the adjacent property owners to include a wider streetscape in front of their properties so that it can part, operate as part of the public realm, part of the public right of way. And I'll show that in a moment. Another policy that they're suggesting is to encourage substantial and diverse residential population in the downtown. So allowing for a variety of different types of housing. And so that's talking about the, the missing middle housing, not just apartments and single family, but also duplexes, triplexes, quadruplexes, anything, even live work units in the downtown. An area they particularly focused on was this area you see here in Ren. And so they looked, some of the strategies they were suggesting here is to come, to increase, to come up with a downtown core overlay that would increase, that would have some provisions in there that would increase the quality and volume of activity in the downtown core area. One unique thing that they're suggesting is a density pool. So density in the downtown right now is calculated at, in some areas, twenty units per acre, per lot, or thirty units per acre per lot. And so what they're suggesting here is, that is a real hindrance to redevelopment and redevelopment in the downtown, especially when you have a large block. And let's say it's a three acre block, it's eight hundred by four hundred, for example, of linear feet. And our downtown code right now allows buildings to go up to five stories. Well, the density, a limitation of thirty units per acre, you can't meet that. So what they're suggesting is a density pool. And it's a different way of calculating density in the downtown. So, for example, you could calculate the density based on the entire acreage of the entire downtown. You have a pool that a developer or property owner can pull from on their property. And within the limitations of the development standards, height and other requirements, they could potentially put as many units as they possibly can on that property, provided it can be sustained within the code and can be serviced with our infrastructure as well. So a property that would be limited to thirty units per acre could potentially be up to ninety or a hundred units. And so you could have a three acre piece of property with potentially maybe two hundred or more residential units on it. We don't see that as an issue because if you look at, a lot of properties in the downtown are non-residentially developed right now. There's a residential develop, potential on that property that's not being utilized and should be utilized somewhere else. City Hall, for example, has a residential potential on it that is not being utilized. Another reason why we don't see a real issue with this is that when you calculate the density for the downtown, the number of residential units potential of the downtown, we're well over four thousand residential units. And we don't even have close to that number of residential, or that population to, so I think we probably have maybe a one hundred or more residential units in the downtown core area. And so if you look at your growth potential, your growth pattern in the past ten or twenty years, you're really not gonna exceed that four thousand. And even if you did, I think we'd have to about, be that point where we're evaluating our comprehensive plan anyway, which is what's something we're supposed to do every seven to ten years anyway. The next slide shows that cross-section. You can't really see it here and I could certainly provide this presentation to you. And these presentations are available on our city's website and I can send you a link to it. You'll see that Palm Avenue, for example, is a certain number of linear feet wide. What they're suggesting is maybe having a downtown overlay code of some sort that could allow for property owners to work with the city to try and provide, make sure they have wide enough sidewalks or pedestrian areas in front of those buildings that can allow, operate as if it was a larger wide, right of way. And then allow for some on-street parking as well. So this is an example of a downtown street, and this is a vision that they're suggesting here. So this, if this is acceptable, this could be something that could be incorporated into code and be replicated in other areas of the downtown. Another town, another policy related to downtown is creating a multimodal environment in downtown that supports a high level of activity in the downtown area and prioritizing pedestrian and bicycle circulation networks. So it's looking at level of service standards and looking at infrastructure that really prioritizes pedestrian and bicycle improvements over vehicular improvements. Some of the strategies, creating a pedestrian oriented buildings and site plans, active ground floor uses, canopy street trees and other shade sources, prioritizing bicycles and pedestrian movement and calming traffic, bikeways, transportation demand management and park ones, cross-section easements and urban manage, and curb management. Another policy is to enhance the visual attractiveness of the downtown area by enhancing streetscapes with public spaces and gateways in the downtown. Some of the strategies to help implement that is to prioritize enhanced streetscapes on these streets and undergrounding utilities if possible, providing a lot, a variety of open space types. Another policy, prioritize connections between the downtown and the waterfront. Some of the strategy, existing strategies, including a waterfront orientation and public use and access to waterfront and maintaining those and creating new ones. Another policy is the downtown mixed-use category shall recognize the variety of character areas. So right now in our downtown mixed-use zoning district, there are several, there's five sub-districts. There's an uptown, a civic, a waterfront, sub-district. Each one has its, kinda like the IRC and zoning district and the sub-districts. So what they're suggesting is maybe incorporate, formalizing those inside somehow in the comprehensive plan. The second area that they looked at in their analysis was that Titusville, Titusville West or West Titusville. And this is primarily made up of the urban mixed-use zoning district. This is west of the railroad tracks, west of, you know, it's on Main Street going west of the railroad tracks and that whole area over there, all the way out to Park Avenue. And that's between Garden Street and South Street. So one of the object, policies they looked at here, objectives rather, is that the city shall have a vibrant urban neighborhood that accommodates a variety of household types, again, talking about missing middle type housing, not just single family and apartments, but other types of housing. And this area would support the downtown area in some way. So another policy, the urban mixed-use designation is intended to primarily, primarily for the redevelopment of areas with a distinctly urban character. So right now our code in the, in the urban mixed-use zoning district is very suburban and they're trying, they're suggesting of making it more of an urban character with some changes to the code. Another policy is to encourage neighborhood serving, mixed-use development, including a variety of housing options. So back to that, and some of the strategies would include parks, neighborhood retail and walking distances of each other. So this urban mixed-use zoning district could allow a variety of different uses mixed in together, but at a lower scale than you see at the downtown. Another policy, provide for the compatibility of mixed land use patterns, which should, which should be consistent, which should consist, excuse me, of commercial office and residential uses to the implementation of the code. Some of the strategies include encouraging relocation of industrial. There's a lot of industrial properties in this area and they're suggesting maybe some policies to help encourage us to be relocated other, outside of this neighborhood. Enhancing screening and buffering requirements between the different uses and screening parking areas. So you can see here, this, the, the two areas that they analyzed, the downtown and West Titusville. And you can see the boundaries of that, that yellow there, that's between, again, the railroad tracks to the east, Park Avenue to the west, South Street to the south and Garden Street to the north. And you can see in both areas, they have a very consistent development pattern. They're blocks, they're not suburban subdivisions. And so it's a great pattern, it's very, it's got the right bones for this kind of development, housing and other mixed uses that the consultant is suggesting here. So the policy states here that they're suggesting is to recognize the unique relationship between the West Titusville and downtown through investment and coordination. I'm sorry?
What's the border between west and downtown?
The railroad. So the way you get between these two areas is really Garden Street, South Street and Main Street. Those are the only three, so Main Street, they're really, they're suggesting as, as an area that should be really looked at. They did not include that as part of their actual analysis like they did with, with Palm Avenue. But it's something maybe we could probably look at in the future because that is really the, one of the main ways to get between these two neighborhoods. And there's a lot of activity, a lot of potential on that road in Titusville. So they did suggest too, that the urban mixed-use land use category and even the zoning should be expanded out to, to incorporate some areas surrounding it. So you can see the, the air, the map on the west is the location of the urban mixed-use land use category and the UMU, that's the zoning district underneath it. So they're suggesting to expand it out into the areas that you see here on the right.
Would that include Park Avenue?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it looks like it would cross Park Avenue.
Okay.
Some of the strategies for housing. Maintain and expand housing opportunities closer to downtown, residential density bonuses, potentially with some caveats. So a, that's gonna be, right now in the urban mixed-use landings category, you can go up to fifteen units per acre. So when you drive in that neighborhood, you don't really see that kinda density, but it is allowed. But what they're suggesting is maybe allowing for some increase, but with some cabbage, some cats, some, something would give. So, for example, maybe improving parks or landscaping. And instead of on-street parking lots, maybe some parking garages as well. So Main Street, excuse me, they did look at, look at a segment of Main Street. So they did look at a cross-section of Main Street itself. So that one of the three areas that you can cross between this two, these two neighborhoods. So again, they looked at, it's similar to Palm Street, Palm Avenue or Avenue. So they looked at the right of way. How can we expand it and, and bring the public, and expand the public realm? Maybe some overlay here that can work here that would be, allow for a public partnership between the city and, and the property owners who are redeveloping or developing new along this quarter? That would allow, be asked to put some kind of pedestrian plaza, wider sidewalks in front of their buildings to increase the public realm and allow some more flexibility for other improvements such as bike lanes, on-street parking and trees. Prioritize safety and local mobility on transportation facilities within the urban neighborhood. So this is related to that urban mix. So this is related to that urban mixed-use landings category. This is something they're suggesting that would be a priority, that's something we should look at. So transportation options in a neighborhood and surrounding areas, reduce vehicle speeds for safety. Again, remember if you look at those two neighborhoods, downtown and this, and this area we're looking at right now, you've got a grid pattern, you don't have a major thoroughfare going through these streets, these areas. So it does have the right bones for a good low-speed type neighborhood. Another policy is to facilitate improvements in quality of life for existing and new residents through investment and revitalization. So canopy trees, we have, we, this is an area we focus a lot of our CPG, Community Development Block grant money in. Mix of subsidized and marketplace housing. And attempt to find ways to reduce blight and discourage incompatible uses. Again, that's going back to the existing industrial uses you see there and finding ways to see if maybe they could be relocated. I'm gonna skip through to the next part, and this is the last part they looked at, gateway quarters. So they looked at this, their analysis included ways to rethink the quarters to create a favorable first impression of the city. Include place-making and wayfinding that can provide a sense of place once within city boundaries. Improve landscaping design and create walkable edges. So this is gonna be looking at our commercial quarters, Garden Street, US One, Cheney. And your, those street, these are major highways, major thoroughfares. These do not operate or function or even have a development pattern that is similar to what I just showed you in the downtown and Titusville West. So these have to be treated a little differently. One of the policies or objectives they're suggesting here is that cities' major roadways shall be treated as gateways, critical to the city's image. Gateway quarters shall accommodate a wide variety and intensity of land uses within a framework that enhances the visual identity of quarters to create a favorable impression for visitors. So one of the policies they're suggesting is the gateway corridor overlay. This is a tool they're suggesting, maybe a zoning tool, to allow for redevelopment of properties or development of new properties and so allow some flexibility and incentives for mixed-use development. This would be primarily focused in areas that already have commercial land uses and residential land uses on US One, Garden Street, South Street, Cheney and State Road four oh seven. And here's a cross-section of Garden Street that they looked at and ways that could be improved. Just so you know, FDOT has been investigating the potential of looking at or not redesigning or I guess just redesigning Garden Street to be designed as a thirty-five mile per hour highway roadway. And so that means.
They're not discussing roundabouts again, are they?
I don't know, I don't know. I just know that they're gonna try and look at ways that it should be designed that ways or operate that way. So now they're gonna have to design it that way. In other words, really reduce lane widths potentially and accommodate on-street bicycle lanes. So you might see some of the on-street parking spaces might be taken away. But this is a cross-section, we did not discuss this with FDOT, this is not something that was coordinated with them. This is something that's just part of this vision exercise. You see in this cross-section here, just the existing right-of-way and what could potentially happen along those major quarters if you allow the, or ask for those developed adjacent property owners to redevelop, using this overlay tool in a way that allows us to create that pedestrian plaza or sidewalk or avenue adjacent to the street, thereby creating a sense of place along Garden Street. And allow for some flexibility for some or other improvements, including street, uh, street trees. So here is an, an idea of what Garden Street could potentially look like on one segment of Garden Street. And this is looking at from downtown, on north side of downtown on Garden Street, west of Hopkins. So some of the policies they're suggesting on the commercial corridors collude as the first impression, impression that many visitors will have of the city, properties and public improvements along the gateway quarters should have a consistent and attractive appearance. So coming up some standards that's consistent all the way through. And that would be implemented in a gateway corridor overlay. Another policy is target investment and gateway shall be supported by the gateway corridor overlay that shall encourage development and redevelopment with horizontal and vertical mixed-use development. So allowing for residential and commercial development to be on the same development, same project along the commercial quarters. And this is, this is a horizontal way of looking at mixed use. So you have separation of uses, but all in the same project. So it's a mixed-use development. So you have in red there, some commercial development. You have a lot of that commercial development along closer to the, to the highway there, but you also have some residential in the back. This is a lower intensity mixed-use concept. And here's another version with it just turned a little bit. So you have, the development is actually residential and the other half is commercial. But you look at the density throughout the entire project in order to get that residential density on there. This gateway corridor overlay, if this is suggest, if this is something that we, the city council wants to consider doing, would have some urban design standards, some minimum standards that would have to be adhered to. And then, South Street, they looked at that as well and provided a cross-section of see what that, what that could potentially look like if a gateway corridor is adopted and implemented. I'm not gonna go through all of these, I'm gonna, I think you've got the gist of what the consultant has presented. Just so you know that the, again, because the development pattern along these quarters is different from which I just showed you in the downtown and the Titusville West, the treatment of pedestrian, of creating a pedestrian environment along these quarters is gonna be a lot different than what you see in those other neighborhoods. So these commercial quarters are not, you're not gonna, you're not gonna ask for buildings to be right up along the highway. Maybe some distance and separation, there may be a maximum distance or maybe required distance if this overlay is implemented. That would require maybe a half bay of parking, could include wider sidewalks, but some kind of interaction where the, the parking lots are oriented in a different location on the site. And some minimum urban design standards to allow for a mixture of uses, including residential and commercial potentially. So you just have to have the right design standards in place to allow for that kind of mixture. So the next step after this, council's heard these presentations. Now they are gonna receive a draft from the consultant later this summer. And then I was hoping to bring this back to you maybe in beginning of July with just a informal presentation on the next iteration of these policies to get your input. But then eventually you may see this again as a transmittal hearing. So with that, I'll turn and answer any questions you have.
A member of Garage.
Brad, I have a question on the idea of incorporating a street Palm with a limited right-of-way and the consultant's idea of having this open space and common area. Is the presumption to provide for public easement in addition to the right-of-way and then the city takes over maintenance within the easement, is that the concept?
Potentially, yeah, we're all like, options are open right now.
Or dedication of additional right-of-way, whatever comes. The second question is when, as, as, as I became aware recently and other members I think are also, the legislature has provided all urban areas that have mixed-use zoning a great Christmas present, so to speak, with regard to building heights. So you had a panel up there that showed a five-story building height limitation within that same mixed-use area that's comprised of the area from, I presume, the river all the way over to Park Avenue. The legislature has now said that you cannot restrict height any less than any building of comparable height within one mile, which I believe would incorporate that retirement village building here. I'm gonna guess it's thirteen, fourteen stories tall. In addition, the ten-story building that's at the river. And by that legislative law now, anybody that comes in with an affordable housing impetus, you can't restrict height. And my reading of that is the city is potentially having one thing thought with the pictures of buildings as demonstrated and another thing happening potentially. If you start to promote affordable housing and you have a large mixed-use area that's all within one mile of these two buildings on this end of town, everyone has to be prepared, I think, to know that you're not gonna be able to say it's only a five-story building because if I can present a plan that works, I don't exceed the density, I meet the setbacks, I'm gonna build whatever the height of that building is. I'm gonna, again, I don't know that height, but I know it's a lot taller than five stories. And that's something that the council and the city council in turn have got to be prepared for. And they've removed the right of the local government to say otherwise.
Just, yeah, you're referring to the Live Local Act.
Yes.
That's related to affordable housing and what it stated is, what it states is that as far as height, we can't deny an affordable housing project as long as it meets the criteria with, or the caveats inside that, that law, even in a commercial zoning district or an industrial zoning district.
Yes, and that's all what's in this area.
And the count, we actually plan to bring a, give a presentation to city council next Tuesday about that law.
How it affects, very good, very good, thank you.
Member Rogers.
Well, that was basically my question. I was kind of going to say, having all these, you know, beautiful plans been rendered moot. I'd, I'd love to hear that they have not been rendered moot, but I, I guess I just, I feel, I feel like we were sort of, sort of kicked to the curb. I like this board and, and, and city, you know, council and all that by Tallahassee. And frankly, I, I kind of think there's gonna have to be some sort of a, you know, a letting, you know, sort of a grassroots pushback on that because I think this is just the developers working behind the scenes again to do whatever they want to do. But I, I'd love you to tell me that's not the case, but I, I almost kind of feel like this is a bit futile talking about all of this right now because we've been, I don't know. There was a term in England, gezumpt. Gezumpt was what happened when in English, and I've lived in England for three years. You could, you could put in a bid on a house and if they said, okay, I accept a bid on your house and you said, woo-hoo, I'm gonna buy a house, and then all of a sudden, you know, somebody else said, actually, I'll beat that by twenty thousand pounds, and then you got gezumpt. And they said, whoops, sorry, I'm gonna take the twenty thousand pounds more. And then you had to decide whether you kicked in twenty-five. I think we've been gezumpt, or have we?
What's your minute, Tom?
So have we given up on US One and downtown and calming? And it just seems like everything here is like waving the white flag and saying, FDOT's not gonna let us do anything and there's no way to slow down traffic in downtown and so we'll just move downtown the street over, is that where we are?
No, I, yeah, FDOT did, we, several years ago, the council did ask FDOT to do a quarter study of US One and Garden Street. That study was brought before city council, included a roundabout and even a peanut in the downtown between Hopkins and US One and Garden there. I, I don't think, and it, it did include some, some treatment along US One to help calm it down. I, I don't, those things are, those ideas are still there. I don't think it's a moot point, I don't think we've given up trying to calm down US One. So I think what the consultant was doing this time around was to kind of look at something that was a little easier as far as redevelopment because Palm Avenue is owned by the city. Now, we adopt those policies or the vision and incorporate into some policies into some code requirements, maybe that's something that could be incorporated to development along US One and then in coordination with FDOT. So I, I don't think we've given up on, on US One.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm all for, you know, if we were successful in getting downtown to be vibrant, it's gonna grow and, and Palm would be a natural place for it to grow. So, you know, and, and a lot of this, it's, I think, you know, kind of let the market decide. So I'm certainly for making Palm be entertainment district and, and, you know, making it easier for businesses and incentives to, to turn it in to, to that vision. I think all of that's fine. I think, you know, for that really to be successful, now we turn US One into, or downtown into a two or three-road-wide district of, you know, what, what we think we want downtown to be instead of a one-road district, whether that be Palm or, or US One. But I, I think we, you know, gotta keep driving to figure out how to, how to make the old historic downtown that we advertise on the interstate work.
Yeah, I would just add, I think the plans for Palm Avenue are a canopy in the sky. Because it seems to me, I was in my head going, I was thinking of what is on Palm Avenue. You've got St. Gabriel's, you've got the old courthouse, you've got law offices, you've got the women's center, the, just a sidewalk between that and the road. And then you've got First Baptist, First Methodist. You don't have the width where you can do those things they just showed. And I, when they showed council Mariners Way project, I think two, three months ago, the audience got up and really slammed it, and I agree with them. That's taken out the parking, the valuable parking in that area for food trucks in the green space. And, you know, I think it's kind of way off. Maybe parts of it will work, but I seriously doubt the Palm Avenue and Mariners Way would ever happen. Any other discussion?
Mr. Rogers.
Well, is, could I get an answer on whether we'll be able to wrest back any control of our comprehensive plan from Tallahassee?
If you're concerned, the Live Local Act is very specific as to what a property owner would have to do and meet in order to put an affordable housing project in place. It'd have to be restricted income and that, I mean, that does, they have to some qualifications to have to meet in order to do it. So I don't think it's gonna, from, you're gonna see developers coming roughshod over local ordinances everywhere in the state of Florida. I think it does allow a lot of flexibility, but I don't think it preempts us from coming up with a flexible tool that is being suggested here for redevelopment along our quarters. Because not every developer is gonna propose an affordable housing project.
However, I mean, I think we all know that it seems to be that frequently an affordable housing project means simply that, you know, ten percent of the units are set aside as affordable housing, but then sooner or later, those are too expensive for people who need affordable housing. And so eventually, you know, you shrug your shoulders and say, oh, well, and then, you know, then it's all luxury.
So the act, so everybody knows, does not allow us to control rent. We can't do that. So we can't even ask someone to set aside a certain number of units of a multifamily or development for affordable housing, that's not something we can do. However, an affordable housing project is not just something that's just less expensive. It actually has to be some kind of restriction on there that says that the property owner, it can only offer that unit to someone who qualifies for whatever it's that building, that structure was developed for. So if, you know, a hundred and twenty percent AMI, I guess, you know, that is probably, if, if that is their goal, they can certainly do that and offer rental units to people of that particular income. But they would have to qualify for that. So it's not just building something that's less expensive.
The act, in effect, killed any home rule idea. A home rule has been stripped of every city in Florida. And I'm serious, I've lived in Alabama, Georgia, North Carolina, Tennessee, and I've never seen anything like this, that is stripping home rule from every city.
We have been trying to read through all the laws that have been signed and still waiting to be signed. And there is a lot of changes that are coming down from the legislature and a lot of mandates. A lot of flexibility in things, a lot of money being thrown at programs as well. Affordable housing has, the funds have increased three times. Three hundred million dollars in those funds now. And also DEP is gonna receive a lot of money to distribute in grants. But yes, there are a lot of laws. In fact, we just went through one today that talks about having to amend our comprehensive plan by next year. So we have a lot of work to do, but we will try to, try to keep you up to date on what's happening. But our resources, our staff resources are gonna be. happening. But our resources, our staff resources are going to be, have to be reallocated in the next 12 months to address all these.
Okay, is there any more discussion? Are we through with this item? Okay. Next item is the Sunshine Law refresher. And we just received, I think most of us have, if you haven't received it, a financial disclosure form in the mail that's to be completed by July the first. And it's fairly simple, but I disagree with the way it's laid out. It doesn't matter what you own in property in other states, you just got to say what property you own in Florida. And it says, you have to, even your disclosure of your indebtedness, you've got to include the car loan. I mean, it doesn't make any sense to me, but it didn't take but a minute to fill it out. Your turn.
Thank you. Thank you for the reminder on the financial disclosure form. This evening's report from my office begins on page 32 of your agenda packet. And what I did here is I provided you with a link to the annual Sunshine Guidebook because it is 381 pages. I chose not to include it in the agenda packet. It is found on the world wide web. It's published and issued annually from the Florida Office of the Attorney General. If you have not pulled up that link this year, I would recommend that you do that and bookmark it at home. We do also have a copy of the Sunshine Manual that is found on Agenda Star. If there's, for any reason, something that you want to look up tonight. The purpose of my report here is to just give you a quick refresher, let you know where these things exist so that you can find them whenever you have questions, but mostly just to open it up to see if you have any questions on anything in particular because we do have a couple of new members. And the basic component of the Sunshine Law is that you're not allowed to talk about things that come up before this board outside of one of your regularly scheduled meetings. And so you have the opportunity now to ask me questions with each other in the background so you can all hear the answers if you have any questions on the Sunshine Law. The report that I've included in your agenda packet again has that link to the manual. And then it also includes a brief overview PowerPoint presentation that was prepared by the Attorney General for the State of Florida. And I've included it in your packet, so hopefully you've had a chance to look it over. And I won't take up too much of your time. I just wanted to make sure that you all are on the same page. And if you do have any questions, now would be a good time to ask me.
Any questions? Oh, Mr. Rogers.
As the newest member, I do have a couple of questions. I'm looking at what's printed here on page 35. In the absence of statutory exemption, it applies to any gathering of two or more members of the same board. So does that mean if I want to talk about somebody not on the PNC board, I want to talk about an issue not on, with somebody who's not on the PNC board but is on the city council?
You can go ahead and talk to them.
Yeah, I can talk to them.
Sunshine governs you all as a group, talking to each other.
That seems strange to me.
It also, it also governs the city council members talking to each other. So it's about that particular body that has an ability to vote on something as a group. So those fellow voters in your group are the folks that you are prohibited from talking about what you may vote upon.
So even, so if we, you know, had talked about something in the meeting tonight and they're going to have a meeting next week, would I be allowed to talk to somebody on the council and say, hey, this is what I think about this? And, you know, what do you, I don't know, and suggest how, you know, what I think they should do or what I think we should do or the city should do or something that's okay?
The Sunshine Law does not prohibit that conversation. Now, if you are going to the city council to say so-and-so said this, then you would be acting as a conduit in violation of the Sunshine Law. So you can't do that. If you are calling up the mayor to say what your thoughts are on something, the Sunshine Law doesn't prohibit that. Now, if the mayor decides that he thinks it would be inappropriate to talk to you, he may choose to shut you down at the beginning of the conversation, or he may want to hear what you have to say. Depends on the substance that you're.
But if we have kind of, you know, I mean, voted on something and sent it to them, but they have not voted on it or heard it yet, that's still okay.
It's not impermissible. It is okay for you to speak to the council members.
All right. And then along those lines, once we have voted on something, finished voting on it and the meeting's over and, you know, can I then talk to somebody on this board about how I felt about something and?
My recommendation is no because something can always come back up before this board at the next meeting. Somebody could ask to revisit that topic, or that particular project could be revisited by the applicant, or something else may change in the project where they're required to come back before this body. And then you would have had some conversations with another voting member that would be prohibited by the Sunshine Law. So the general advice is not to talk about your applications before this body unless they have been completely developed or you are talking about it at this meeting.
The first rule of Fight Club is don't talk about Fight Club?
Member Garrett.
A question for you, Chelsea, if I may. I know there has been some bannerings and questions back and forth about how the Planning and Zoning Commission could take a field trip, visit to see examples, affordable housing was one of those. And particularly with public meetings that occur and that we can participate and have discussions at the public meetings like we're having tonight, the concept of having a bus trip, we'll just connotate it that way to make it easy, it may be two buses, but it seems that I experienced an example where a field trip with Planning and Zoning Commissioners, in this case, a planning commission, as a field trip to study something that was taking place in two different counties at the time. In order to not violate the Sunshine Law, there was an advertisement, it was a public meeting, the bus was afforded a number of seats available for the public to attend at large, the press was invited, minutes were taken, and the tour concluded and everybody went home. And at that time, that was deemed not a violation of Sunshine Law. It was a financial limitation, but it's not like you have to consider, well, we'd have to have a fleet of buses because thousands of people may want to come. You can limit how many people can attend as we have here. You can only have so many people in this room. So to have a public meeting, not everybody who may want to attend may attend. They can see it maybe online, they can stand outside and hear it, or they can review the occurrence in the minutes after it's taken and you've concluded it. So I'm wondering how you see the Sunshine Law under a scenario like that where, for good reason, they want, the planning commission wants to take a field trip and the city council would support the cost expenditure to do it. Can you have, what would it in effect be, a limited room size, publicly noticed, minutes taken, and a field trip where everybody could look at it at once?
I hear you, but I think that the conservative approach would be to advise against it because a member of the public couldn't come and go as they wanted to. They would have to be in it for the long haul, wherever that bus is going, just to hear a portion of what one of the commissioners may or may not be saying. And so I think that the conservative approach is to keep it in, in the four corners of the City Hall building or one of our other city structures where someone could come and go at their leisure. And if they could only stay for a small portion of the meeting, then it would be accessible to them.
Okay. And so that would be the advice, but it wouldn't necessarily compromise the Sunshine Law's integrity if you chose to say, we would like to do that. It's not, no, but it's suggested not to.
That would be my advice, yes.
Thank you.
Any other discussion about that item? Anything else, Chelsea?
That's all I had for tonight. Thank you.
Okay. A city staff, do you have a report?
No, sir. We left on the DICE a list of developments that are under review. These are just site plans. We have 50 applications in review or under construction of some stage right now. That is, I think, three times more than we've had in past few years. So we've, it's a lot of projects happening. So this was just updated recently.
City attorney, do you have any other thing to report on?
No, sir.
Just one thing. I'll say, a member Rogers showed up in shorts tonight.
If you got it flaunted, I'm saying.
It's June, ain't going to be July and August?
Just getting ready.
So the, does the commission agree? If you don't have bony legs, you're allowed to wear shorts.
Sub moved.
Okay, you're allowed to wear shorts. Any members? Do you have any reports? Mr. Rogers.
I hope this is the right time to say such a thing, but it, I've just been mulling over various policies. And I just think it might be nice in regards to all of the discussion about small and affordable housing, to reduce, or at least pass on a suggestion to reduce the minimum size in PD-type zoning from 600 to a 400 to 600 range. I think it might allow, you know, efficiency-type apartments or studio-type apartments that would lower the price in a, in an apartment or condo development to the point where they would be more affordable. And it would be a quick way maybe to get a few more slightly cheaper residential, you know, dwellings available. And I know it's a bit off the agenda, but I just, that was a thing that I thought. And I also think that there was quite a bit of focus in this comprehensive plan on aesthetics or not, in basically gateways, gateways into the city and the aesthetics thereof. And I continue to feel that, you know, I don't think we have a tree ordinance in this city. And the, you know, place where I ran, the idiot next to us took down a, probably a 200-year-old oak, you know, that was, it would take three people to reach around. And it was in the way of him moving his camper up because he didn't want to put it on the other side of his house because on that side of his house, he could hook it into the septic, which is probably some code violation. But anyway, you know, so there's a 300-year-old oak that shaded the whole end of the house and it's gone now. And he didn't have to do anything. He didn't have to, didn't have to replace it, didn't have to pay a fee, didn't have to get it, he just chopped it down. And I, I think that maybe we ought to start thinking a little harder about aesthetics, and that includes trees. But it also, you know, includes scale and design and, and building quality and that sort of thing. But anyway, I just, I did want to pass along, maybe the, reduce to a range, maybe a 400 to 600. I don't know, it's a small dwelling space, but people are living in less. And, and, you know, the developer, one of the developers recently who came up and spoke admitted that he actually might make more money off of three 500 square-foot units than he would off of one 1,500 square-foot unit. So I think maybe that we're not necessarily hurting, you know, the, the people who, you know, who do, who build these things.
We worked long and hard for several years on a tree ordinance. We thought we had it done. Now we see it's not being followed directly because they can always just give credits and sending the trees and the wetlands to, you know, I just won't continue. Rest of you know what I mean. Well, it's the land in Volusia and Brevard County, extreme north. But, you know, anyway, anything else that come before the meeting?
I had one, one thing to note on. I don't know if you, everyone here would have seen the news that broke today, but Brightline purchased 30 acres of property, I think it was 38 acres of property by Tyco Airport between it and I think the distribution warehouse that's there.
Yeah.
And that's, somebody's not just buying 38 acres named Brightline for something. It should be interesting. Nobody knows what they're doing, but they did purchase it. So that'll be interesting.
Yeah, they're not commenting, and that just shows how long you've lived in Titusville. When you use the term Tyco, everybody's kind of puzzled. They call it now Space Coast Executive Airport or something like that. Any others items?
Is that, was what I was suggesting? Is that something that we would like take a, make a motion on at this point and pass it? Or is that, is this not the time for that?
Probably, what is the, what kind of motion would you make?
Just to suggest that they begin a process of considering moving the limit of 600 square feet for, for the, the limit on kind of an apartment-type development to four, a range of 400 to 600.
Something that we could discuss at a next meeting, either next meeting or the meeting after.
Sure, we can add it as a future agenda item.
This most, this meeting is over. Adjourned.